I'll call the meeting to order if I could. Are there any declarations of particular interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, I have a motion to adjourn for the purposes of conducting a public meeting. Counselor Henderson, Counselor Azalacos. All those in favor? Opposed, many, that's curious. We'll now move to the public meeting this evening. And the order or the purpose of this meeting is to give counsel and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to zone change. Zed zero two dash two one. The application affects the property with municipal addresses of fifty five and sixty five Lorne Avenue East in the city of Stratford. The order of procedure for this meeting is as follows. Staff will present the application. The applicant or their agent will then make a presentation. Counsel may ask questions for the purposes of clarifying the application, but are cautioned not to make comments or take a position on this application at this public meeting. Registered delegations will be asked for their presentations, comments, and questions. Questions and comments from the Q and A will be read by the clerk's office staff member. The public is advised that if a person has not provided counsel with oral submissions at a public meeting or written submissions before a bylaws adopted or a decision is made, the local planning appeal tribunal has the power to dismiss an appeal. The public is also advised that comments expressed in written material presented are a matter of public record for full disclosure. Are there any questions as to this order of procedure? Seeing none, we'll now proceed with the meeting and I'd ask Alyssa Bridge, manager of planning, to present the overview. Ms. Bridge.
Good evening. Through your worship, I'll go through a quick overview presentation here on the proposed zone change amendment for fifty five to sixty five Lorne Avenue East. Just confirming everyone can see that slide deck, okay? Great. So, planning has received a zone change application for fifty five to sixty five Lorne Avenue East, requesting to expand the range of uses permitted within the existing I two dash fifteen zoning. The following uses have been requested. A day nursery, a fitness club, a personal care establishment, a personal service establishment, a specialized medical office and clinic, and for this one they've requested a maximum gross floor area of fifteen percent of the total floor area. And in addition, they've also requested a site-specific regulation to reduce the minimum landscape open space on the site from twenty percent to fifteen percent. The site is located on the southeast corner of Erie Street and Lorne Avenue East. And is currently developed with a number of one and two-story buildings that are currently occupied for office-type uses. And there is also surface parking on the subject property. The property is designated industrial area in the city's official plan. And the industrial area designation permits a range of uses, including manufacturing, assembly, repair, wholesaling, and the storage of goods. Secondary uses and accessory uses are also permitted within the industrial area designation. Accessory uses which provide services for employees or increase the attractiveness of industrial areas may be permitted, provided that neighborhood neighboring areas designated for commercial purposes are not capable of providing the desired level of service to the industrial area. Such uses are encouraged to develop in groups to form small commercial centers and would include neighborhood stores, restaurants, and personal care establishments. The subject property is zoned I two dash fifteen in the zoning bylaw. There's a range of uses that are currently permitted within this zone that include a business office, a car wash, a commercial school, a data center, a factory store, a motor vehicle service station, a private club, a recreational park, a warehouse, and a professional office. The application was circulated to internal city departments as well as agencies and to all property owners within a hundred and twenty meters of the site. No concerns have been raised through that circulation and no public comments have been received to date. In terms of next steps from this application, following today's public meeting, staff will receive any additional feedback. We'll review the feedback and we'll prepare a recommendation report that will come to planning and heritage committee and then ultimately to council. That is all I have for this evening and I'm happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Bridge. Is there any questions from members of council? Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. Ms. Bridge, can you tell me what the percentage of landscape open space on site is right now?
Through your worship, I don't know that offhand, Counselor Ingram, but that's certainly something we can include in the report when it comes back to planning and heritage committee.
Thank you. And the fifteen percent that they're requesting, is that basically just for landscape medians in the parking lot and then the boulevards?
Through your worship, that's my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll now ask the applicant's representative, Dave Ashton, to please give us a presentation, Mr. Ashton.
Good evening, Mayor Matheson and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here this evening. I don't have a formal presentation. Ms. Bridge has given you really all the information that's available. And we've had a number of discussions with staff and appreciate the time that they've put into navigating through the request to ensure the bylaw that is proposed is in line with the official plan and that's the intent of the request this evening when we're looking for additional uses on the site to support the industrial uses. There's been a number of requests for different types of uses on the site from tenants of the site. And I would just note that while the lands aren't subject to this application, our client also owns the various parcels along the frontage of Erie Street that have the commercial uses. We originally looked at, you know, considering the entire site and changing a number of the uses. But through, again, various discussions with staff landed on just adding some of these supportive uses to the industrial zone and there are some commercial areas adjacent to the lands. What we saw is the real opportunity here was there are a number of vacant spaces within the site. And by providing some of these additional uses and it would support filling in some of those vacant spaces and also support the existing tenants on the site, as you know, being successful in leasing office spaces in these days is making sure you have amenities that would support those that are leasing and those that are working in the area. And that's the objective. With respect to Counselor Ingram's question, the current open space percentage is, I don't have the exact, but it is just over twenty percent. There's a central, when you've been to the site, there's a central kind of grassed area on the site. That's a component of the landscape in addition to the traditional kind of sidewalks and the hardscape area. That central area will need to stay in some shape or form as it also is part of the stormwater management design for the site. So that would be a detail we would work through in any site plan application in the future for any new development that would be proposed. But the request is looking to reduce to fifteen percent to provide some opportunity that there may be in the future to infill on the site. But we'll also recognize the need for some landscape open space and the stormwater management requirements. Again, those would be addressed through any changes that might occur through site plan approval. At this point, there's none proposed. The idea is to utilize existing buildings. But we're looking to plan the site for the longer term. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions myself and appreciate the opportunity to continue to work with staff to bring this forward.
Thank you, Counselor Ingram.
Hi, Mr. Ashton, how are you?
I'm good, thanks.
I wondered if in place of some new buildings providing for infill, if there was the opportunity to go higher on the existing buildings because they're all either one or two-story buildings?
To Mayor, it's a fair question. I don't have the answer. I don't know. I think there could be that as a potential, but I'm not quite sure. Certainly, perhaps if there's any new buildings, there may be opportunity to intensify in that way.
Thank you. And then with respect to your comment on amenities for the ability to lease the vacant office spaces, certainly it's been shown that green space has been proven to be an amenity. And many office workers do enjoy going out to green spaces on their breaks and lunch hours. So I'm wondering if there is any opportunity to stay at the just over twenty percent current landscape open space?
The fair question, we've requested the reduction. I think if that's, you know, something that's a question for me to take back and some further discussion with staff, I'd appreciate that opportunity. I don't think the intent is to completely remove the green space. As I mentioned, that's part of the stormwater management system. But if it's fair to leave that one with me, I'll certainly take that back for further discussion.
Absolutely, thank you.
Hey, Counselor Henderson and Counselor Burbak.
Hi, good evening. My question is, I wasn't quite clear on, like, I know you're asking for a change, but if you're going to be building, I'm wondering if there's a chance for a sidewalk? Like, I know there's going to be a new construction at the corner of Lorne and Erie, and they should be bringing a sidewalk from, say, Tim Hortons to the corner and then down to the next corner, and then that's almost to your property. And, you know, it would be really conducive if we could have sidewalk continued to the edge of your property and then, you know, eventually we can continue down the road.
Yeah. To you, Mr. Mayor, I think, again, maybe something we could discuss with staff. There's no intent in the immediate future for development through site plan that would kind of trigger that sidewalk or that construction. But maybe there's something that we could have some discussion with staff on and see what could occur.
Sounds great because we have more and more people wanting to walk and ride their bikes out there. So make it safer for everybody and make it safer for them to get to your buildings.
Thank you. Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. My question was actually very similar. But I was going to ask if there was going to be any pedestrian or cycling infrastructure within your property because you already have some established restaurants that workers would be going to. And there really is, doesn't seem, having driven through that area, there doesn't seem to be any infrastructure at all for pedestrians or cyclists. So I was just wondering if there was a plan to put something internally to keep pedestrians especially safe in that area?
Again, to you, Mr. Mayor, I think both good points on what does that look like as far as as we start to talk about infill and development. But again, the uses locating in existing buildings wouldn't necessitate really a change to the site. But we're happy to have some discussion with staff as I think there's certainly maybe some discussions on the site as well as it relates to different types of connections. And if there's an adjacent site plan that's looking at opportunities, there could be some opportunity to find some solutions.
Thank you.
Anything further for Mr. Ashton? All right, there's no other comments from members of council at this time. That we have no delegations scheduled and I'll let the clerk just confirm that if she could.
Through your worship, I guess that is correct.
All right. Is there anything in the chat box?
Through your worship, there have been no questions or comments submitted through the chat function in Zoom for this application.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ashton, do you have any closing comments then?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, nothing further. And again, we'll make sure we follow up on these points and discussion with staff and look forward to seeing you again soon.
All right, thank you. City Council intends to consider this application at a future planning and heritage committee meeting where members of council will have an opportunity for full discussion of the application after reviewing comments received from the public at this time. If anyone would like to receive further notice of this application, please email clerks@stratford.ca. A video of this meeting will be posted to the city's website and this public meeting is adjourned. I will now call our second public meeting to order and the purpose of this meeting is to give counsel and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to zone change application. Zed zero three dash two one. The application affects the property with municipal address of fourteen Milton Street in the city of Stratford. The order of procedure for this meeting is as follows. Staff will present the application, then the applicant or their agent will then make a presentation. Counsel may ask questions for the purposes of clarifying the application, but are cautioned not to make comments or take a position on the application at this public meeting. Registered delegations will be asked for their presentations, comments, and questions. Questions and comments from the Q and A will be read by the clerk's office staff member. And the public is advised that written material presented and oral submissions are a matter for public record for full disclosure. And if someone has not made a written submission or an oral submission prior to a decision being made, the local planning appeal tribunal has the power to dismiss an appeal. The public is also advised that, as I said, comments expressed in written material presented are a matter of public record for full disclosure. Are there any questions as to this order of procedure? Seeing none, we'll now proceed with the meeting and Jeff Bannon, staff planner, will present the application. Good evening, Mr. Bannon.
Good evening. I'm just setting up the presentation. Thank you, your worship. Sorry, I'm just waiting for the slideshow to start here. Here we are. Zone change application Zed zero three dash twenty one is an application that was submitted by Patterson Planning Consultants to change the zoning of the property at fourteen Milton Street from a residential second density R two bracket two zone to residential third density R three zone to include special provisions to allow an in as an additional permitted use to allow a front yard setback of six point one meters and eastern side yard setback of four point two meters to permit a zero point five meter setback for a parking area and driveway along the western side of the property without a planning strip to permit two-way traffic driveway with a width of five meters and to permit a patio to be located within interior side yard with a setback of one meter from the eastern property line. A planning justification report and cultural heritage impact assessment were also submitted with application. The subject lands are located on the north side of Milton Street between Downey Street and Nile Street. To the north of the subject lands is an apartment building. To the east is singly detached dwellings. To the west is a commercial building and to the south is another apartment building. The property is designated downtown core and residential area in the official plan and is within the heritage area. Downtown core policies allow for a range of retail uses, office, accommodation, institutional uses with facilities for community recreation and parks. The residential uses also permit development and upper stories of commercial buildings informal industrial and commercial buildings or in freestanding structures. The lands are zoned residential second density R two two. And they're proposing to rezone the lands to an R three special zone which would allow for the proposed in with specialized setbacks and driveway provisions. The R three zone includes zoning provisions for non-residential uses, which is why they have requested that zone. We've circulated the application to agencies and to the public. The fire department has noted that a fire inspection and report fee will be applied annually at current rates. Community services in the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority do not have any concerns or objections. And the CN Railway has submitted comments back to us. They noted that since the subject site is located within three hundred meters of the rail guard that they would like the applicant to undertake a noise study and to insert noise warning clauses into any offers to purchase or agreements to purchase and sale or lease of the dwelling. The public was also circulated on the application. It was sent around to seventy one surrounding property owners. Notice was published in the Beacon Herald and no public comments have been received to date. Any remaining agency comments will be provided at a future, through a future report to the planning and heritage committee. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. To, at this time, I'd ask the applicant to Representative Scott J. Patterson and Patterson Planning Consultants to make his presentation.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Counselor Henderson.
Okay. I see they have the accessibility parking spot and they put it up against the wall instead of against the building. But I'm wondering why it's four point five instead of four point nine?
Through your worship, the zoning bylaw requires a parking standard for a barrier-free space of four point five meters. In the new zoning bylaw, the proposed bylaw that will be updated would include provisions to require type A and type B spaces. And being that there's only one space being provided, it would be a type A space with a minimum requirement of four point nine meters. So through the application, the future application for a site plan amendment will be looking at them to increase the size of that width to four point nine meters. It's not a requirement of the zoning bylaw at the current time, but it may be in place by the time they move forward with the development. And we figure that it is good practice since we're moving towards that new standard that all new developments should comply with that new standard.
I'm a bit confused by that. As far as I know, type A hasn't changed. It was type B that changed. Type A's always been three point four and one point five for the sidewalking area, like the unloading area. But type B just got changed from two point four to two point eight. So I'm confused by the type A that you're saying it's a new width. When did that change?
Through your worship, our current zoning bylaw does not have type A and type B spaces associated with it. It requires four point five meters for a barrier-free parking space.
I thought we were using the the accessibility guidelines that were put out by the accessibilities committee many years ago, and now we've got an update one that's been updated for the type B.
Through your worship, we are encouraging that use, but it's not formally in the zoning bylaw. So we attempt to get to that four point nine meters for all spaces. We asked them to go to that type A space. But it's not a zoning bylaw requirement. Our zoning bylaw requirement right now is four point five meters in width.
Whoa.
Right. Is there any other questions for staff at this time? Counselor Clifford.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask staff, when we talk about it in and then we talk about bed and breakfast and short-term compensation, if I could have explained how an in is different the other two.
Through your worship, so an in's allowed in like a C three zone. And they're asking for an in to be allowed in the residential third density zone through the special provisions that are being requested. So an in is basically a commercial establishment. It's typically used in commercial areas or, and I think it's allowed in the mixed-use residential area. So it's different than short-term accommodations, which would be similar to like a bed and breakfast that are typically allowed in residential areas. Those provisions, again, they've been discussed through updates to the new zoning bylaw. And through those updates, once we do get those new provisions in place, those definitions would also change.
Anything further for staff? Okay, at this time I'd ask Scott J. Patterson, on behalf of the applicant, to make a presentation. Mr. Patterson.
Good evening, your worship and members of council. As noted, my name is Scott Patterson and I'm the planning consultant assisting the property owner with this project. Further to staff's presentation, I have minimal comments other than to confirm we are indeed seeking a zone change for the land at fourteen Milton Street from the R two two to the R three zoning. And as noted, the purpose of that is to allow for the use of the existing building as an in. In order to accommodate the proposed use, site-specific zoning regulations are required. And those are, one, a reduction in the front yard setback from seven point five meters to six point one meters. This is an existing condition on site whereby the existing building is currently at six point one meters from the front property line. So through this zoning bylaw, we're looking to legalize and recognize that existing condition. The second one is a site-specific zoning regulation to recognize the eastern side yard setback to be four point two meters. The zoning is typically a two point five meter interior side yard setback or one half the building height. We believe the building to be roughly eight point five meters in height. So we technically may comply. But to be on the safe side, we're seeking just a recognition of the existing condition again of a four point two meter eastern side yard setback for the existing building. The third regulation would be permission to allow for the proposed driveway to be within zero point five meters of the western property limit. Whereas the zoning would today require one point five meters. The existing driveway into the property is in this location today. And I would note that the abutting property has their driveway along this common property line as well. There are some existing trees along this property line that we'll be looking to try and maintain and trying to minimize the encroachment down to zero point five where possible. And next is to provide a two-way traffic aisle of five meters, whereas six meters is required. The intent being to have the bulk of the parking in the rear yard area and to access that area for guests. They would need to pass by the existing building. We envision little traffic through this area and through the site plan process signage and appropriate details to ensure functionality can be determined. And lastly, we're asking for permission to allow an A grade patio to be within one meter of the eastern property limit. The zoning bylaw speaks to uncovered patios being permitted in the rear yard area, but does not mention a patio being allowed in the side yard. So given the width of the existing lot and the placement of the existing building, the opportunity exists to have the patio areas in the side yard as opposed to a rear yard placement. And recognizing this in the zoning bylaw will allow this to occur. The six parking spaces are required for the use of the property as an in and six parking spaces are proposed. As noted, some of the site-specific regulations being sought are to recognize existing conditions and those naturally will not be changing. The staff report contained a copy of the concept plan that we submitted with our application. And this outlines the intent for the property. This proposal would also need to progress through site plan approval where the details of the project would be finalized. And as I just heard, that may include some updates to the barrier-free parking space and to try and bring the site into conformity with regulations that may be imposed through your new zoning bylaw. And I have no concerns in trying to work with staff to recognize those and make those happen. So recognizing that the project is at its very early stages from a processing standpoint and that this is the first time council is seeing the proposal. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time and I look forward to working with staff on this project and bringing it back to you as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Counselor Henderson.
I have a question. I couldn't see it on this site plan. Is there any plans to make one of, either the front door or the back door accessible by putting a ramp in so that if somebody has accessibility issues that they're able to get in? I'm assuming some of the units would be on the ground floor?
Now, through your worship, yeah, that you're correct. The current site plan does not show a barrier-free access to the existing building through the site plan process. And when we get comments from the city's building department, we'll look to that and to see if we can make the building barrier-free accessible and what's needed to accommodate that request. But yeah, that will come forward through the site plan process, I'm sure.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time for Mr. Patterson? All right, seeing that there are no other comments from members of council. All right, seeing that there are no other comments from members of council at this time, I do believe we have one public presentation. It's Mr. Patrick McCabe. Mr. McCabe, are you here with us? Mr. McCabe, is it possible that you could turn off your speaker? We're getting a lot of feedback there as you operate your microphone.
Yes, I've done that.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe. Over to you. Thank you.
I've got some questions regarding the difference between inn and breakfast. Heard that the presenter talked about inn as a special. I've spoken to residents here close area of fourteen lives on Milton Street. Particularly interested in activity that goes on in this not a bed and breakfast. Now it's going to impact our community here. So I heard in the presentation that there was a patio. How large is the patio and how many people could be accommodated?
Mr. Patterson, or if Mr. Bannon has that answer? Probably best Mr. Patterson provide it.
Yes, your worship, through you. Yeah, there are two concrete patios that are currently illustrated on the site plan concept before you. Unfortunately, I honestly do not know the the square footage or the area of those patios. They are at grade. And there is currently a wooden board-on-board fence along the eastern property line that would provide screening to those patio areas. As far as occupancy, the existing building has a total of four bedrooms in the front unit and one bedroom in the back unit. And these would be for short-term accommodation. Naturally, if the festival was ongoing, this building would be geared or used typically in the purposes of that. That that is the intent, I think, going forward is just to legalize and allow that type of situation to occur. I don't know if that addressed Mr. McCabe's questions or not, but I can try and readdress if didn't.
Mr. McCabe, do you have a follow-up on that?
Yes, I followed. I have a follow-up on that. So there's five bedrooms, so let's say easy arithmetic, that's ten people. What about people from off-site? That is to say not lodgers? What happens to them? So this is open not only to the lodgers, but this would be a liquor license open to the general public, yes?
Through your worship, there's no intent to seek a liquor license for this. This is basically, this is purely a residence, a place to stay for short-term accommodation. There's no restaurant facility. There's no dining facility. There's no liquor license being obtained for the property. And I don't, I do not anticipate or envision anyone who is not a tenant of the building or has that short-term accommodation right to be coming on-site to to stay on-site. And based on experience, it's, we've noted that typically people who come and if they book a a unit that has more than one bedroom, they would come in typically one vehicle. I know that can't happen right now under current pandemic situations, but that's typical practice is that two couples would come, rent one unit, attend the festival or some other event, share a unit and then leave the next day or when their trip is over. So that's the intent for the use. Definitely no liquor license or anything like that would be applied for for the property.
So, thank you. So as far as future development is concerned, this site is going to maintain, so there won't be any additional rooms being it from a B and B to an inn.
Through your worship, the the intent for the property is outlined on the concept plan presented and what will be taken through site plan approval. Right now, in my opinion, the site is going to be limited by the parking provision on site and what can be done on site. So I don't foresee any additional development at this time. I can't speak to the future. I don't know the landowner's intent five years from now, two years from now, but my instructions right now are to seek the approvals necessary to recognize what's on the concept plan today. Naturally, any modifications or future development would have to be reevaluated and be in accordance with zoning regulations applicable at that time.
Well, that's our concern. Concern is the future development. Patio, indeed. Two patios. Licenses are only a matter of time. Six parking spots, twelve people. Could be outdoor food and beverage. Name it. Takeout for food and beverage. Increases our vehicle traffic noise. We have a concern already on Milton Street regarding the increased traffic. Speed of this traffic. Told by my neighbors that back from me regarding this. All of these issues. Future potential redevelopment that would increase traffic on the street. Patios. Anything that would involve further activity.
Mr. McCabe, your last comment was very spotty. I'm not sure that we heard it. If you'd like to maybe try communicating it again, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor, I was trying to identify the potential for future development. Six parking spots now. People. Five rooms. We're concerned here on Milton Street. Increased traffic, vehicle, people. Boys from the outdoor to patios. Already experienced increased traffic, vehicle traffic. We're experiencing the speed of that traffic gradually increased. So this particular development, something that we're looking to see if there's going to be an impact moving from bed and breakfast to an inn and the allowance for this potential as future development considerations. We want it to increase our traffic. We don't want it to increase the speed of the vehicles on Milton Street.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe. So I believe, and I'll just summarize the concern is that with regard to traffic on the street and further development, they are concerned that as it moves now from a B and B to an inn that could further erode it. Does staff have any feedback or Mr. Patterson with regard to the size of the current property and what development opportunities are still available there based on lot coverage and zoning restrictions that are in place or contemplated as part of this process?
Through your worship, those are things that we will have discussions with the applicant and we will report back with with those comments and discuss those issues through a report to Plan and Heritage Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Mr. McCabe, does that summarize your concerns that I've asked him to look into?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reserve position on this before applications are approved until we get some feedback regarding the potential of future development and the issues that I've raised.
Yes, you do reserve the right to do so. This is a process. Then from here goes to committee where you can also present to that group as well. And the issues you've raised today have to be answered or at least brought forward at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And can I receive these answers in writing from this meeting?
The clerk is aware of your address for email and they will ensure that you receive a copy of the staff report and the minutes of this meeting, sir.
Thank you.
We have no other delegation scheduled. I'd ask Ms. Atkins from the clerk's office, is there anything in the Q and A section for further comments from the public at this time?
Through your worship, there are no comments at this time.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from members of council? Counselor Clifford?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask if there's an inn, is there staff on on the premises twenty-four seven? I know with bed and breakfast and other ones that have to be staffed. If there's a party or something happening, happening.
Mr. Bannon?
Thank you through your worship. There's no requirement in the zoning bylaw for an inn that it has to be staffed. There's an option that that can be included. You could have one of the dwelling units in an inn being used for the owner or an operator. So they they could utilize that if they had extra rooms that they weren't needing. But there's no requirement for an inn unlike a B and B, which is owner occupied.
Any other question at this time? Counselor Clifford, follow-up?
Yes. I'd like to ask if there is a problem, like how's it addressed if there is something going on that is hurting the neighborhood or like a sound problem or like how is it resolved if there's no staff?
Through your worship, it would be addressed the same way that you'd receive any other property complaint in a residential area. You could go through bylaw depending on what the complaint is, city bylaw, or if it was off hours, it could be taken care of through the the city police department.
Any other questions for Mr. Bannon? Mr. Patterson, do you have any closing response as the applicant?
Thank you, your worship. No, no further comments. The questions and concerns raised by Mr. McCabe are duly noted. And I look forward to speaking with Mr. Bannon and the rest of city staff about those issues and taking this through the process. So I'm happy you participated and appreciate his comments and will work to resolve those.
Thank you. There's nothing further. City council intends to consider this application at a future Planning and Heritage Committee meeting where members of council will have an opportunity for full discussion of the application after reviewing comments received from the public at this time. If anyone would like to receive further notice of this application, please email clerks@stratford.ca. A video of this meeting will be posted to the city's website and this public meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Our next public meeting this evening is the purpose of this meeting is to give council and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to zoning bylaw amendment application Z O four dash two one. The application affects the property with the municipal address of thirty-four Brunswick Street in the city of Stratford. The order of procedure for this meeting is as follows. The staff will present the application. The applicant or their agent will then make a presentation. Council may ask questions for the purposes of clarifying the application, but are cautioned not to make comments or take a position on this application at the public meeting. Registered delegations will be asked for their presentations, comments and questions. Questions and comments from the Q and A will be read into the record by the clerk's office staff member. And the public is advised that if a person has not provided counsel with oral submissions at a public meeting or written submissions before a bylaws adopted or a decision is made, the local planning appeal tribunal have the power to dismiss an appeal. The public is also advised that comments expressed in written material presented are a matter of public record for full disclosure. We'll now proceed with the with this meeting and we're here with regard to this application from our staff planner. This time, Victoria?
Through your worship, good evening. I'm just going to share my presentation here with you folks. I hope everyone can see that.
Yeah, there we go.
Great. So this zone change application pertains to thirty-four Brunswick Street. The application was received to permit a brew pub. So the address currently operates as a restaurant with a liquor license, but the owner would now like to sell their beer that they brew on-site now off-site. The property is Zone C three and the application would propose a site-specific C three zone to permit that proposed use. Use. Here's an aerial view of thirty-four Brunswick. It's located on the north side of Brunswick Street and the east to Downey and west to Waterloo Street. This is the the subject site from the exterior. This is their concept plan that they are showing in the basement in terms of their production. Based on the official plan, the area is designated as designated as a downtown core and permits all types of retail uses, offices, hotels, entertainment, governmental facilities and facilities for communications such as recreational centers and open spaces. Again, the zoning bylaw, the C three zone permits liquor license establishment, a restaurant and other uses that don't pertain to the specific application. Specifically, the draft comprehensive bylaw that is not yet in play defines a brew pub as a small-scale brewery producing beer for sale on the premises or for distribution beyond the premises with the floor area devoted to the production, producing of production, production, sorry, guys, of beer not to exceed thirty-five percent of the total floor area of the brew pub and includes an accessory drinking establishment or restaurant and accessory retail sales. There have been no comments up to date from the agencies that we've circulated to, and there have been no comments from the public that have been circulated on this application as well. Will receive any feedback from the public meeting or any staff counselors would like to comment on this, please?
Thank you very much, Victoria. At this time, representing the applicant is Laurie Semansky with Keystone Hospitality. And I believe the owner, Anthony Jordan, is there as well. So I will turn it over to Laurie or Anthony to begin the conversation.
Through your worship, the owner is on the line. However, my understanding was he is available to answer questions, but was not intending to make a presentation.
Thank you. This time, is there any questions from members of council? Okay. There's no questions from members of council. We have one scheduled delegation this evening. Mr. Larson, I will, is Mr. Larson on the line?
So through your worship, Mr. Larson was unfortunately unable to attend the meeting. However, he did submit a statement that I will now read. Firstly, my properties, companies have investments in two properties in Stratford that are brewery zone in the last couple of years. We've dealt with both the building department and fire department on buildings and their need for proper mechanisms to avoid both harm to the building and harm to potential consumers, retail and manufacturing. They are at twenty-one Marketplace and one fourteen Erie. Both have specialized zoning to produce beer. I want to state clearly that beer is water. This is not a large distillery nor is beer made in any major compressed or flammable environment. Beer is not hard liquor. Beer is water, ninety to ninety-five percent water. I commend Bri House slash Keystone Hospitality in trying to zone their building in a proper form. They're utilizing their building with the utmost ability and the zoning, in my opinion, should be approved swiftly so they are in line with the proper procedures to continue their product manufacturing. I also believe that the brewery definition should be added as a simple C three or better category to avoid this ridiculous procedure to open brewery. to avoid this ridiculous procedure to open brewery based beer hall so firms can make their own products that restaurants already source, serve and handle. Our city has a history of breweries dating back to mid eighteen sixty. This concept is now again top of mind with consumers and our zoning by laws need to be adjusted to allow for more of these companies to do that. As I stated, I believe as both competition to Keystone Hospitality as well as a landlord who has dealt with the zone change issue in the past, this needs to be approved immediately. They are no longer in violation to produce brews in their establishments. And Mr. Larson signed it. Thank you. And again, the statement was submitted by Mr. Kevin Larson.
Thank you. This is from the clerk. Ms. Atkins, is there anything in the chat box?
Through you, your worship, there have been no comments submitted for this application.
And at this time, I don't believe Mr. Jordan, Jordan wants to add anything further. Is there anything else from members of council have a question on? If not, city council intends to consider this application at a future planning and heritage committee meeting. Where members of council have an opportunity for full discussion of the application after reviewing comments received from public at this time. Anyone would like to receive further notice of this application, please email clerks at stratford dot T A. A video of this meeting will be posted to the city's website and this public meeting is adjourned. At this time, I believe we will reconvene in council and I'll turn it over to the clerk.
So through your worship, item four is reading of the bylaws and there's one by law listed for consideration and that is four point one, the confirmatory bylaw.
Councillor Henderson, move first and second reading, seconded by councillor Burbak, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, if any, that's carried. Third and final reading is moved by councillor Agafney and councillor Bunting, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, if any, that's carried. And then a motion to adjourn this evening's proceedings, councillor Clifford and councillor Vazalacos. All those in favor, opposed, if any. That's carried. Good evening. Thank you, everyone.